You changed his profile?
Catching a bar again. You know, both sensors together, which this is our Thursday in the morning. We woke up. Uh? We've got this weird getting toward. Getting to the hotel. So we're getting. Sit behind here and then it was cool.
Jay, for cash?
No. That's the same for us. Oh, you're talking either. This thing of their. Their cat, their cat, they're about to go flying. Literally. For Calm Rich. So if you're ready, so all those two starters, the little starting to buy it in. Well, wait, hey, that thing on the twenty eighth, they're doing in the heat. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Catching a counsel. Yeah, it's early. I got a soul, soul treatment. Yeah. Four counsel. Yeah. Whatever works.
Yeah. I, I. Much in the trouble.
It's all right. So true. Yeah. Yeah. So hold it here. I got it. The week they. I didn't tell my. I don't know. Yeah. Very live like the presentation and then I got to make all the patients. We're in, of course. I love it. You know, I started my. Yeah. I did yesterday. I should. And I'm not the B A old boss. Yeah, we try. I think a little bit, yeah. Is it here? So those are going back for you. Democrats. The text that. Release the findings to. Don't turn this over, it's gonna freeze. Question. What happened at the? As well. I think. Six hundred dollar five. You know, the core is the. What the. They were. Little bit. I don't know. Can you do a point? There's a lot of people. In total. Yeah, I looked. Yeah. I watched the reason. California. It's like that. That thing there. Next. So all this may have. I did all that. Obviously, they can. I hope. You know. Do you have your? We're really. We'll be there. As well. Yes. Something else. You forget.
Uh, well, it's not the one that how would they?
Yeah, I was gonna say, man, it would have hurt. Right. Trying to get out of. How they said it's like. Well, no, if we actually. Of course, we're trying to. I want to buy. Yeah.
Yeah, there's also. Matter of.
An hour. Yeah, I mean, I would have liked to drive, but. Do you have that? No, uh, me and my wife, we have a house. So. Yeah.
How are you?
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Good. Beautiful. Monica? Oh, wow. Kiss what? The bomb is going by the work. Hey, I'm top of this. That's. We're. Oh, God. This is funny. Yeah. A little wider. That was. There was a spot. Right. Right there. Just something hanging.
Airline. Just one. Yeah, that, yeah, the other one. It's, uh, it's, uh. What?
You know, your, your city things. Yeah. Please listen.
I listen, I would know that. I forget if over up that part of the country.
So you want that service? So Michael put the.
Yeah, something.
Yesterday, I'm from. It's good. Same. It's one of the best. I'm so. Um. Okay. I see my name.
I'd like to. I'd like to. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, um. Yeah, um. I'm. You should. That's the one I like. What? What? All right. Thank you so much for taking. This is what I'm planning.
Good evening. The workshop council meeting for the city of Coppers Cove, Texas, held on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, is called to order at five o'clock P M. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mayor Yancy. Christina Stropes.
Rita Hogan.
Sean Alzona.
John Hale.
Dale Tredway.
Here.
Here.
Everybody's here tonight. We move to item C announcements, Mr. Stropes.
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
None at this time, thank you.
I had nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, just two items. This Saturday is June twenty first, and the Coppers Cove Public Library will be hosting the Juneteenth Freedom Celebration at the library. And so I encourage people to go there at noon on that day and beginning tonight, we are introducing and presenting the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And in the coming weeks, we will have a number of special meetings. So for residents, those who wish to be informed and engaged, please be aware of that and participate. Thank you.
Mr. Hale.
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
No announcements, sir.
No announcements.
All right. We move to item D, public recognition.
D one, retirement recognition, Ryan Haverlaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Osborne. Mayor and Council, we have a great evening to celebrate with one of our employees that has finally made the decision to retire from service with our organization. We are celebrating with Mr. Kevin Sheldon, celebrating twenty years of service and retirement from his position. So we typically go through a number of things when we get to see our employees retire from our organization. And so I have a bio to read, and then we have some things to present to Mr. Sheldon, and the mayor will also have a presentation. So, beginning, Kevin began his employment with the city of Coppers Cove as a patrol officer in the police department on April four, two thousand and five. He spent the vast majority of his career with the patrol division, however, transferred to criminal investigations in June of two thousand and sixteen, where he served as a detective until his retirement just two weeks ago on June fifth. With twenty years of experience with the city of Coppers Cove, Kevin has been a dedicated employee who was always willing to serve the community. He achieved a Masterpiece Officer Certification through the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, and he also served the department as a field training officer. Serving the Criminal Investigations Division since June of two thousand and sixteen, Kevin gained a great working knowledge in CID, displaying attributes of being a logical thinker and problem solver, all the while having a great sense of humor. He was always real and understanding when dealing with victims, routinely treating everyone equally and with respect. Kevin has been recognized for displaying great empathy, care, concern, and professionalism to the citizens of our community on several occasions, some of which were Employee of the Quarter in two thousand and fourteen for his efforts in saving an unconscious individual from a burning building. Unity Award for assisting a stranded motorist by buying them gas, and Rotary Club Officer of the Quarter. His supervisor once commented during an evaluation that Kevin's strength is his job knowledge. He is well-versed in fraud cases and possesses the ability to thoroughly organize and plan. I rely on Kevin when needed. He never neglects his duties and always responds accordingly. Kevin has been more than just a coworker, he's been a friend and a mentor in a trusted presence within the city and the police department. On behalf of the city of Coppers Cove, Kevin, we congratulate you on your retirement and wish you and your family the very best from all of us. So Chief Wilson is presenting to Kevin a gift card based on our policy of the length of time that he's served our city, along with a Tumblr. Very nice, chief.
No explanation.
And before we let the mayor up there, right behind you, Eddie, is a framed art. We also present our retirees with a piece of art that they choose, and we have framed, nice, very nice, look at that. Nice pick, Kevin. And lastly, Mayor Yancy will present Mr. Kevin with a mayor's coin for his service.
Forgive me, I don't know how long, how close I need to speak to this. I'll say a few words. I just want to say that it's gonna be a lot of thankful and appreciation. I started this job, this career as an officer, basically when I felt like I was a kid. I was a kid when I started, and now, twenty years later, I have gray hair, so I'm not a kid anymore, but it's earned gray hair. And I'll say that I'm grateful that I spent my entire career here with Coppers Cove, because the city allowed me to grow up and actually become a man. That's the way I feel. I got a lot of life experience being a police officer and a detective, and the folks I work with helped me to become better. And so I'm grateful that I'm able to say I retired with Coppers Cove, and I want to say also that I'm thankful to everyone who helped me during my rough times. We all have down times, we have up times, so I'm grateful to all the folks that I work with, and you guys know who you are, that helped me out during tough times. And I'm grateful for the city. I've been here twenty years, and I've seen the support from the council over these years, and right now especially, and so I'm thankful for you guys for sure, and I'm thankful for the community, because I've seen it day in and day out. We're fortunate that we live in a city where we're still supported, and I see that all the time, and I'm grateful for that as well. And I don't want to forget about my family. My family's been there through the good times, and the times of getting woken up in the middle of the night, having to go out to work, and the kids hear me rustling around, and where are you going, Daddy? Gotta go to work for a little bit. But that's done, you don't have to worry about that anymore now. So I'll say this, that every person has their time when they realize it's, it's time to move on. And now is my time to hang up my badge and let the other guys who came after me enjoy that and have a rewarding career. And so basically, just for everyone, thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item E, workshop items.
E one, presentation, discussion, and possible direction on the city manager's proposed F Y two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budget and plan of municipal services. Ryan Haverlaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Osborne. Mayor and Council, today starts our truly official time period where we are presenting a proposed, official proposed budget required by our charter and state law. And it starts off a number of future meetings where we will discuss the budget. Many of those meetings are special-called meetings, so they're not typically on the first or third Tuesday of the month. But we have a few months to, a couple of months to go through the budget in detail, and all the aspects that come along with that budget. And then there will be future action in August for you to adopt the budget, tax rate, fee schedule, and our long-range plans. I have discussed the topics that we have tonight with the mayor and explained to him the length of time that we need. I know I've shared with most of you that the workshop will last at least ninety minutes tonight, because we have the proposed budget to go through, and we have an update on the utility rate study to review also. And so our consultant with Public Works Director Scott Osborne is here to go through that piece. So I will be going through the budget, proposed budget. It is nothing different from what we have discussed previously in the numerous meetings before this, while we've been working on and preparing this budget. So there should be no surprises to you, I hope, but if you have questions during the presentation, by all means, please stop me so we can answer those questions. Just keep in mind that we do have many meetings to go over this in much more detail than what I'll be presenting it to you tonight. Before we get started into the budget, I also want to say thank you to the council for providing your direction and policies as we prepared the proposed budget. Also, a big thank you to Ariana Beckman, who is our Budget Director, and her team, and then, of course, all of our directors, because Ariana puts in the time to bring it to this point where it is so concise. I'm gonna be able to give it to you in a brief, as the mayor says, brevity is beautiful. It will be a abbreviated presentation to an extent, but we have many more times, Mayor, to discuss this in much longer detail, if that's understandable. So we're gonna start right now with our vision statement, mission statement, this is not new to you. However, it has changed as of last week. The vision statement is currently, the vision of the city of Coppers Cove is to be the premier community in the Fort Cavasos Central Texas region, a place to work, play, and call home. Fort Cavasos has now been officially re-designated as Fort Hood, and so that vision statement will eventually have to change along with that. And as we go through this process, we will make sure that that actually happens and occurs. Our mission statement is actually focused on valuing community partnerships, promoting family values, fostering a healthy business environment, enhancing our quality of life, and advocating for our citizens and our military. And all of those items are addressed in our budget. Our budget is solely focused on those basic qualities that a municipality should be providing to our residents, and so that's what we'll see throughout the entire budget. So our agenda tonight, we're gonna go through an overview, talk about some challenges and the goals associated with some of those challenges. We'll look at our specific major operating funds, briefly at other funds, and then what our future dates are. But specifically on the right side here, you see that the city manager is responsible, according to our charter, by submitting this proposed budget to council. State law also, through the Local Government Code, Chapter one oh two, dictates how that budget is supposed to be prepared, and when a public hearing is supposed to occur on this. City Council will take action during the regular meeting on setting that date for that public hearing. And then lastly, we have this scheduled for adoption on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. State law dictates that it must be adopted by September thirtieth, so that you can see that there's plenty of flexibility in there, but we try to always be ahead of the game when we are working on such a big endeavor that sets. we are working on such a big endeavor that sets the stage for our next fiscal year. So looking at the specific proposed budget, let me walk you through this chart. On the far left side, we talk about the major operating funds, list all the other funds in aggregate. Beginning fund balance is that first set of numbers, so that's basically the available cash position at the beginning of the fiscal year. This is an estimate because we're not done with this fiscal year yet. Our expected revenues for next fiscal year and expenditures, and then what our ending fund balance be, or that available cash position at the end of next fiscal year. And you can see, general fund starts with $12 million, revenues at 24.6 million, expenditures 25.4 million. You see there's an $800,000 difference there. We'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. And then ending fund balance at $11.4 million, which is still far above what our minimum requirement is for that fund balance. Water and Sewer in a similar position where we start with $9.1 million, $22.3 million in revenues, $23 million in expenditures, and then an ending fund balance of $8.4 million. And we'll talk about the deficit as we go through this presentation. Solid Waste in a better position where revenues actually exceed expenditures. Golf Course also in a similar position. Just want to point out on the Golf Course, just a few years ago, we were at over a million-dollar deficit with the Golf Course. Three years ago, a million-plus dollar deficit. So great effort and success by our Parks and Recreation Team led by Parks and Recreation Director Jeff Stoddard on making this happen and your commitment to making that fund continue to have a positive impact on its fund balance. All the other funds, looking at $21 million in revenues and $20 million in expenditures. Overall, what we would say as this budget, it's a $77.4 million budget, which is based on that expenditure number. The strategic plan from 2021, City Council adopted, there are four primary goals within that plan, and those goals are identified here focusing on mobility of downtown. And I'm not going to go over all of these in great detail as we reviewed this during the City Council Retreat earlier this year, but just to point out a few of the changes that have occurred since that retreat happened. The first one is focusing on mobility for downtown. We received a Railroad Crossing Study Grant with, in partnership with a BNSF Railroad. That grant was received from the Federal Rail Administration through the Department of Transportation at the federal level. And we recently received word just this week that the grant agreement for that grant is now available and authorized to sign. I want to point that out because it's only been a couple of months since we received notice that we received that grant. And when we received that grant, we had our initial introductory call with FRA and they said, "Hey, it'll take us anywhere between 12 to 18 months to get the agreement ready." We're a couple of months down the road and that agreement is ready, which means they are highly interested in our partnership with them in getting this grant done. So we are receiving a lot of favor from different organizations to move these projects forward. Next is Land Swap Multimodal Facility. We received $10.3 million from the OLDCC Office of Local Defense Cooperation, Community Cooperation Office. It was the Defense Communities Improvement Program Grant. And just as a reminder, there was an additional $2.6 million that we were going to have to come up with to partner with TechDOT to actually let this project and construct it. Again, TechDOT stepped up and said, "We will cover the $2.6 million with a grant from TechDOT." And then most recently, we have received word that OLDCC will give us a notice to proceed so that we can then pay TechDOT. And I can't hold them to it yet because it's not in writing, but OLDCC will potentially reimburse us for the full $10 million before the project begins and then it's an administrative effort to keep reporting the progress of the project to ensure that those grant funds were used as intended. So another great success for our community. Compensation, Education, and Leadership Development. Just recently, we graduated our Development Leadership Academy and class and what a phenomenal class we had over the last sessions with all of our students, just amazing. Council, you've maintained that commitment to compensating our employees as closely aligned to market as possible. I'll talk a little bit more about that as we get through the details of the budget. And then the Transportation Roadway Improvements, State Highway 9 to Business 190 Interchange is officially done and it has been open now for months and I-14 is still progressing forward. We've actually seen additional work from the Brownwood TechDOT District on the Western Expansion. There's also work being done on the Eastern Expansion of I-14 from I-35 going east as well. So I-14 is continuing to expand as far as the planning and design work. Economic Growth and Development, you have received a number of discussions from the Economic Development Corporation on different activities that are occurring with economic development efforts. Specifically, the last two items, Council has directed me to work with the EDC on a strategic marketing plan and a TERRS study and creation effort as well. And so those will be coming to council soon for authorization. Addressing Vacant Buildings, we've actually included that in the upcoming budget and we'll talk about that briefly. And then Service Expansion Improvement, we continue to work on expanding our services. However, our financial position and the financial resources that our city receives on an annual basis has really been a inhibit, inhibiting resource to where we cannot expand services quickly at all. And so we'll talk a little bit about that as well. Operating Deficits, I've already mentioned, General Fund and the Water and Sewer Fund, we'll look at those very specifically soon. Employee Compensation, the proposed budget does include market adjustments for the non-public safety positions. And just as a reminder, we did market adjustments for the public safety positions during the current fiscal year. Our residents, our voters, had a option to approve a tax rate increase this past November, which they approved with almost 60% approval rate, so that our public safety officers, police, and fire would be able to receive that market adjustment during the current fiscal year. Grade and Step Salary Program, adjustments are included for public safety. City Council has adopted a grade and step program and it is included for that step increase in next year's budget. Also, Self Insurance was also recently presented to City Council as an educational item. We are continuing to move forward with that. I can briefly talk about that as we get through the General Fund, but we are still focused on executing, making that happen during next fiscal year. Tax Receipts. Tax Receipts continue to grow as we, as a community, grow, but we're going to talk about the Disabled Veterans Exemption and the relief payment that the state provides to our community and what that impact is for both of those. And then Sales Taxes, we're starting to see that stabilize after the impact of COVID-19. People being told, "Stay home, don't go anywhere." They spent a lot of money in their own community. Now we're starting to see that kind of normalize for us where those sales tax increases year after year are not as great, they're more on a normal increase scale. Water and Sewer, we'll talk about those rates and we're not going to talk a lot about it during this presentation because the following presentation is specifically on those rates. Major Operating Funds, there are four. General Fund, Water and Sewer, Solid Waste, and Golf Course. Forty-five percent of our total budget is the General Fund, 40% is the Water and Sewer Fund. Specifically moving into the General Fund, we already talked about the proposed budget numbers and where we're at $12.2 million as a beginning fund balance with the revenues and expenditures at that 24.6 million and 25.4 million respectively. Ideal Fund Balance, which is 25% of the operating expenditures or three months of expenditures, is $6.3 million, which means at the end of next fiscal year, we will still exceed that minimum requirement by $5.1 million. So we have previously discussed balancing options with the General Fund. We had not specifically shared these yet because things at the legislative level for the state changed after we last had a budget discussion. That change was that the Disabled Veterans Relief Payment Budget was expected to increase at the state level, which would have provided our General Fund an additional $1 million in revenue, and that budget was not approved, which means not only did we lose that $1 million, but House Bill 2894 passed, which further diluted the reimbursement we are expected to receive next fiscal year. And so we have a deficit. And that is the specific reason we have a deficit from an expenditure standpoint. The reason we have a deficit is those market adjustments and the grade and step adjustments for public safety. So there are four options and those four options are probably least desirable to most desirable from a voter's standpoint, and I wanted to present all of these options to you. And the first one was, would be to hold a tax rate election. That is least desirable. We just went through that last year. There was a great effort to educate our voters. I think we did that very well and I think the voters made their decision. And, and quite honestly, aside from that passing last year, the proudest moment I think we as a community should have is that we had the most voters vote during this past like November election than we have in past years. And I said it in numerous public meetings, that I wanted to, our community to be able to outvote the rest of the county, and we did. So congratulations to our voters for stepping up and going to the polls and voting last year. Second item there is Adopt and Maintenance Operations Voter Approval Tax Rate. Does not require election. It does include a 3.5% increase from what is called the No New Revenue Tax Rate, which basically will generate the same amount of revenue for this fiscal year with a 3.5% increase in that revenue number. We won't know what that full number is until we receive the certified values from our appraisal districts and then our tax assessor collector calculates what those rates are after we receive those certified values. Third one is to utilize fund balance. The way the proposed budget is presented to the governing body is that third option right now. The fourth item there is to exclude market and step grade pay adjustments from the budget, which will leave the pay for all positions at what they currently are. So looking in detail at the General Fund, our revenues, taxes make up $17 million of our $24 million revenue budget. Permits and license, just under half a million dollars. Charges for services, $2.2 million. Specifically point out charges for services, most of that is ambulance fee revenue and then the other large portion of that are athletic programs, sport programs in our Parks and Recreation Department. Fines, just over half a million dollars. Administrative reimbursements, $2.3 million, which has a 13% increase. Those administrative reimbursements come from other funds. We'll look at that in just a moment in a little bit more detail. And then miscellaneous revenues, actually a decrease down to $1.7 million. Overall, it's only a 1% increase in total revenues. 70% of that makes up taxes. Looking at the Advilorum Tax Rate, or the Property Tax Rate, you can see the past two years and the proposed current year and what those rates are for Maintenance and Operation, which are the, the gray bar, the top numbers, and then the Interest and Sinking, which is the debt service numbers. And just as a reminder, you see that dip in debt service for the current year and then it goes back up a little bit for the proposed year. We specifically discussed that with City Council last year where we would utilize a larger portion of the fund balance in the Interest and Sinking Fund so that the tax rate would be reduced and especially since we're going into a tax rate election, it would show that we're still reducing the tax rate and we're utilizing other resources to help pay for some of those items. Total Revenues by General Fund, or excuse me, Property Tax and Sales Tax in the General Fund, you can still see that the Property Tax has a slight decrease and Sales Tax has a slight increase. Overall, Property Tax has a right at a 1% decrease. We talked about the fact that debt service is higher next year, but new properties and growth are continuing to be worked into it, the calculated tax rate, which is just over 70 cents, is what is included in the proposed budget. You have a table down there that shows the 100% Disabled Veterans Exemption impacts. We're going to look at that in more detail on the next slide. Sales Tax shows a 3% increase and a large part of the Sales Tax Revenue does come from the Five Hills Shopping Center, which, which also has a 380 Sales Tax Rebate attached to it. There's also a Property Tax Rebate attached to that development. We are now at the maximum rebate percentage. Next week, when we go through the detailed budget, we'll talk a little bit more about what that percentage and that rebate is. Permits and License, we actually show an 8% decrease. We have not seen, while we continue to see growth in the community, each time a house is fully constructed, that means that revenue is not going to come back in for permits and inspections and license in the future. So this is continued growth. It just illustrates that it may be a little bit slower growth. We'll still see growth though. 100% Disabled Veterans Exemption. For the current year, we have an experience, we have experienced a $2.9 million exemption in property tax revenue in the General Fund. We received a relief payment from the state of $418,000. Next year, just based on the estimates we've received so far, we will see $3.6 million of General Fund Revenue exempted. And while we do have a $400,000 expected payment, at this point, I do expect that it will be lower than that. I am waiting for the governor to actually sign that bill, which is House Bill 2894. There is the slimmest of all possibilities that it may be vetoed, but I do not expect The other revenues, 0% increase for Charges for Services, very stable, and fines and forfeitures, which come through municipal court, slight increase of 1%. Administrative reimbursement, 13% increase. We calculated that administrative reimbursement. It was actually much higher than 13%, but based on the performance of the other funds, it is only reasonable to keep that at a moderate increase. The reason it's actually much higher than that is because the number of capital projects that we are working through and managing, and specifically in the Water and Sewer Fund, is significantly higher than what we've seen in the past. We've presented that capital improvement plan to the council, showed what that increase in services or projects is. City Council has initiated the 2025 Certificates of Obligation issuance process and that's included in that process also. Expenditures, we can see that public safety expenditures has a 1% increase from 15.3 to 15.5 million dollars. That's primarily that step increase that's built into those departments. City Administration from 3 million to 3.4 million, 13% increase. Public Works, 753, 54,000 to 863, a 14% increase. Development Services, a 12% increase. Parks and Recreation, a 45% decrease. Keeping in mind that the Senior Center Capital Project Keeping in mind that the senior center capital project is included in the current year's budget, so while that does show a decrease, it's all capital. There is an increase built in for those market adjustments, which start with public administration all the way down to Parks and Recreation, that is driving the increase in cost in each of those departments. Nondepartmental, just a 2% increase. Overall, it's a 6% decrease, primarily because of that senior center capital project. 61% of our general fund budget is public safety. 78% of the general fund budget is salary and benefits, so that equates to positions and people within the general fund. Major changes include those market adjustments for non-public safety positions, just over half a million dollars. The step grade increase for public safety positions, right at a quarter, just over a quarter million dollars, $277,000. And then new requests being 232,000, which we'll look at now, which begin with a citywide, we're looking at an HVAC maintenance agreement of $8,000 impact in the general fund. We have seen great success with an HVAC maintenance contract, primarily in a couple of departments. The library is one of those that we really took multiple units and put into a maintenance agreement. We've had great success in maintaining those units and seeing the life of those units extended beyond what we've seen in previous use of those HVAC units. Police Department also has an HVAC contract. This would be a change for them and a welcome change, because the current maintenance contract is not something that has served us well in the past. It was the original contractor when that building was constructed, and we have not seen great performance out of that contract over the past couple of years. IT Department has a big one. This is Microsoft Office, $138,000. Within our organization, our IT services provides great services to include installed software on all of our computers. Microsoft software is the standard for most office applications. The software we have is the software where we could buy a license. We maintain that physical license, and then we can move it from one computer to another, but we can't duplicate that license by multiple uses. Well, that process with Microsoft has been going away, and we have now reached a point where we can't just buy a license anymore. We now have to have a subscription for most of that software. In working with one of our IT consultants that we call on to help us with certain specialized services, they provided us some information that we are one of the largest organizations he works with that is still not on Microsoft's subscription service for their software. So we've held out just about as long as we can on this, and so it has a pretty significant impact in next year's budget. Network testing is something that we need to start doing to ensure the safety and cybersecurity of our network overall. Police Department has a one-time expense of replacing that lobby window upfront. Fire Department has a number of one-time costs included in their department. Cemetery has a one-time cost for new cemetery software. This will allow us to provide a much better level of customer service to those who need plots at the cemetery, as well as those who are trying to search for relatives or other individuals at our cemetery. And we currently don't have a very robust software at all. It takes a lot of man time to maintain that system as well as utilize it in period. Code compliance is the one that I really wanted to provide a focus on, and if you have not seen the media article on code compliance, I'll make sure that we get it out to city council, but that included us, including $10,000 in next year's proposed budget, specifically for mitigating or remediating dangerous buildings or dilapidated buildings. Just as a reminder, a house exploded on East Blanca Street last year. Once that explosion was contained, from a public safety standpoint, a number of our departments, street and solid waste went out there and cleaned up the right of way where all that material landed, but the property itself sat as an exploded house. And we worked with our code compliance department, who brought me a proposal and went through their chain of command up to me, and we eventually remediated that property, which means we cleaned that property off down to the foundation. It cost us a little over $10,000, and we put a lien on the property. That property subsequently sold, which means that lien was paid off, and we recovered all of those funds. But that project alone really stood out to our community that we can do those types of projects. And I'll give you one example. There's a house on North First Street that has a roof that has been burned through, and it, if you have been by it from when it happened to today, you can see that it has continued to fall apart and fall down. And that's an example of something that we can use that $10,000 to remediate, put a lien on that property, which makes it now marketable, because it has been removed of all the dilapidated material, and will likely sell. And that's on a state highway, which will likely sell, and we'll be able to recover those funds. But specifically looking at trying to improve the aesthetics and safety of our community. So, great, great job to our code compliance supervisor, Rob, who did that news media interview. And I'm going to send it to you. Y'all will be impressed with how well he did. Ending fund balance, overall, we will still be in a very positive position. Water and Sewer Fund, I'm not going to go over all of these numbers in detail, but want to drop down to the bottom. As far as our ending fund balance, it does decrease to $8.4 million, but our ideal fund balance is still below that, which means we are exceeding that in next fiscal year's budget. When we present the utility rate study here in just a moment, you will see that that utility rate study takes this into account, and for the next several years, lays out a multi-year plan on projects, rates, and where we are financially. Revenues, overall, increasing water revenues to $12 million and sewer revenues to $8 million, 10% increase in the overall revenue budget. You can see 55% of that is water revenue, 36% is sewer revenue. These are the proposed rates. I'm not at all going to talk to you about it, because as I've said, we've got a much larger presentation to talk about shortly. Expenditures, overall, you can see great decreases in a number of those budgets. Most of those in water distribution and wastewater collection are related to capital project, capital projects in the current budget that are not expected or planned for in the proposed budget. Want to drop you all the way down to the very last one, which is nondepartmental, increasing from $12 million to $14 million. That is driven by the planned capital projects, which are paid through debt service. We issue bonds for those, and then we repay that through loan payments in each year, and we see that large increase occurring next fiscal year. 28% of the total budget is water purchases, 26% is debt service. Part of the water purchase cost includes capital projects that were being done by Bell County WCID Number One, our water supplier. So while we do our own capital projects, which are then paid by the debt service portion of this pie chart, there's also debt service that's being paid through our water purchases as well, and that's what is included in that 28% also. Part here to point out is that 20% of the overall budget is salary and benefits. If you remove that portion of the debt service and water purchases from this chart, you'll see that salaries and benefits, people make up the largest portion of our operating We talked about market adjustments already. There's $19,000 in new requests. There's also three reclassifications in this fund, which changes a wastewater operator to one wastewater operator in each of those treatment plants to a lead wastewater operator position, building in some responsibility and progression within those positions. These are the new requests of $19,000, furniture for the building department. As we moved into that department, much of that furniture was, continued to be brought over from previous uses, and we've expanded the number of people in that department in the current year. Skate cellular upgrade of $15,000, something that is needed to maintain our tank levels and our pump activities within our distribution system. Cost of water, you can see a big increase in the current year. That was related to those capital projects that are being done, and then a 1% expected increase in next fiscal year. Ending fund balance, we've kind of already briefly talked about that. This is just a graphical representation, that even next year with the deficit that is planned, we will still meet our ideal fund balance, which puts us in a good financial position. Solid waste, again, in a good position. You can see that our ending fund balance is slightly increasing, and we are still meeting the ideal fund balance of 1.2, 1.9 million dollars. This just shows the revenues, where the bulk of that revenue comes in through residential collection, and then the other piece is commercial collection at 1.9 million. Overall, 5% increase in total revenues. 60% of that is residential collection. Again, rate changes, we'll discuss that shortly. And then overall, these are the expenditures, and you can see there's fluctuations on percentage changes in each of these budgets. Some of these are driven by existing vacancies that were in the current year that we may not have filled, so that creates savings in the current year's budget. Also includes market adjustments for each of those divisions. 26% is hauling and disposal, which means that is the trash that we take from our city and go put it in a landfill, and the cost to transport it to that landfill is 26% of our overall budget. 29% is salary and benefits, and then 25% being that hauling and disposal cost. These are the major changes, market adjustments, and then new requests, which is that HVAC maintenance agreement. 6% increase in the hauling and disposal cost is expected for next fiscal year. Ending fund balance, still in a good position. And then the golf course, great story here in that we continue to see our revenues increase and grow beyond what our expenditures are. Courses looking great, play is looking great, golfers are actually happy, and there is a new association, relatively new association, supporting and marketing the golf course specifically, really bringing in tournaments to bring in new players. So, overall, just want to point out that what this means is that the golf course is paying for itself. It is not tax-supported funded at this point, based on the specific operations included in the golf course fund. I'm not going to go over each of these individually. You can study those slides, but really just goes into more detail on the golf course. Other funds, we have numerous other funds. The larger of those numerous other funds is the Tax Interest and Sinking Fund. That is the debt service fund. You can see we have a beginning fund balance of 1.7 million. Revenues come in, expenditures go out, and our ending fund balance is 1.9 million dollars. The Drainage Utility Fund is that utility fee that we pay on our utility bills, starting with a $1.5 million fund balance. Revenue is a 1.8, expenditure is 1.5, and an ending fund balance of 1.8. Street Maintenance Fund is the fund that we really need to have a focus on and discussion next week when we present the proposed budget, and we'll talk about that. Just as a reminder, the transportation utility fee is a council directive that you have asked us to work on, and we will be bringing that back to council in the coming months for discussion and consideration, with a future anticipated implementation date proposed for in 2026 at some point. All the other funds there, you'll have a lot to discuss with the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund when outside agencies present their funding request. And then miscellaneous funds at the very bottom has some large numbers for the current revenues and expenditures. We'll take a quick look at those also. Changes in Drainage Utility, very consistent with what we've talked about for the other funds, except it does, except it does include a new position as a, for a laborer. Street Maintenance includes all of those positions. The second bullet point there, I want to point out, street maintenance projects, there is $0 budgeted next year, because we have been doing those street maintenance projects, and we have exhausted the available fund balance in that fund, and so that's why council has directed us to, and we are bringing forward that transportation utility fee. Sales tax authorization, good information for you to be aware of. Next year in 2026 is when we will have a reauthorization of the use of that sales tax for this purpose. We'll drop down to the last, actually, we don't even need to cover any of those today. We'll cover a lot of those next week. And then upcoming dates, June 24th and 26th, next week, Tuesday and Thursday, is when we'll go over the budget in detail. Non-city organizations will be on the 26th. They'll do their presentations and talk about a number of fee schedule changes that date also. July 31st is when we will present the tax rate calculations, that we will have the certified values already. We will have the calculations, and we will be presenting how that might change our general fund revenue for next fiscal year. We'll also have a public hearing on the proposed budget, and in parentheses, we have down there the Military Affairs Dinner that has been scheduled for that evening. So my expectation is that we'll start our regular meeting at 5:30. The Military Affairs Dinner arrival starts around 6 o'clock with guests arriving at 6:30. I expect that we will be done with that meeting within an hour. So by 6:30, we should be done, so that council can attend that dinner. August 5th is another big date of taking a record vote on proposing a tax rate. That is not the adoption of the tax rate. And then August 19th is probably the biggest action day, where you will have the opportunity to adopt the budget, set the tax rate, adopt the fee schedule, and all of the long-range plans. So, I flew through that, Mayor. I hope that was brevity for you, and I'll take any questions or comments that the council may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions, comments?
Okay. Mayor, I would recommend that we move right into the next meeting then.
Okay.
Or the next item.
Did you have something, Sean? We're going to have plenty of time for that. All right. Next workshop item.
E2, Presentation and Discussion Regarding Updated Utility Rate Model, Calculations for Water, Wastewater, Solid Waste, and Drainage Utilities. Scott Osborne, Director of Public Works, and Matthew Garrett, Nugin, Strategies and Solutions.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Good evening, council, mayor, Mr. Havilaw. Okay, tonight, following on the heels of Ryan's very rapid proposed budget presentation, I have another long presentation. First of all, I'd like to apologize for the delay on getting you all this presentation. That was my fault. That was not Mr. Garrett's fault from Nugin. He got it to me, but unfortunately, I was at a water park and was not thinking of getting this out. So, my apologies once again. I'll do better next time. So with this, I wanted to go through, and we've had multiple discussions about the efforts that we're going through, to ensure how I would term that we are still tracking with rates as we embark on very ambitious but obtainable capital improvements, COP, capital outlay plans, as we go forward to address some of the issues that exist in our existing systems, and also to pave the way towards the future with those assets in terms of expansion, to provide water, wastewater collection, wastewater treatment, solid waste, drainage, et cetera, from those funds. So with that, originally, city council. So with that, originally, City Council engaged NewGen Strategies and Solutions back in 2022 to create a functioning set of rate models. And we've been, we as staff, been actively working with these models through the budget process year after year to ensure that, once again, our enterprise funds are tracking with the expenses as they escalate year after year based on those additional projects that we're bringing on, including this year's issuance of the 2025 COs and going forward for the next several years. With that, just to ensure, based on everything that had changed over the last two years, we once again brought NewGen in to go through and update those models, which NewGen has completed despite city staff being a moving target at times because things change on a daily basis in Public Works. I would tell Matthew, okay, we need this. Oh, wait, that changed. Let's, here's a new CIP plan, go ahead and factor that in. And he would, he would graciously smile and make that happen. So here we are tonight with that. Matthew and his team of several experts have gone through, updated our rate models. The results of these rate models, as you will see, track very closely with the discussions on the presentations we've had with City Council year after year for the last couple of years. So there's no real surprises here, but it is a great validation of what are those impacts as we embark on, once again, this ambitious path forward to, to square away our systems. With that, Matthew Garrett, you have about 35 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's as if Scott knows me. It's the second person on city staff this week telling me to hurry. But I want to try to beat Mr. Havelaw's time, so I've got it right here, counting. So thank you for having us back. The rest of my team, Steve Dug, Dave Yonkey at our Austin office, did a ton of work on this, so a lot of kudos to them. I'll step right into it, try not to repeat some of the summary data already shared in the prior presentation relative to the funds. But talk quickly about this project. As alluded to, this was an update. Generally, we were asked to provide model support and then come to this meeting. And so we've done that. One other, I guess, kudos to Steve Dug specifically on my team. He actually revamped the entire water model. Cynthia and Scott and team were working through it. It had, it was a cranky child and we knew how to handle that model, but we, we revamped it to make it easier. So we, we listened. We actually have a brand-new model provided to staff this year that they can use going forward. Hopefully it makes updates a little easier on them. And that's something that Steve Dug did, really, without asking me. So good job for Steve. So ultimately, I want to plug that. The real talent isn't here tonight, it's just me and I apologize for that. So for, as mentioned, so over the 2025 through 2030, that's that six-year horizon, you have a hundred million dollars of capital projects in the forecast. You already have the 2025 debt series and the assumptions about funding for that first year, but that still leaves a pretty good slug of cost coming forward. That, as alluded to, is not news, right? This is a CIP plan. You'll see the capital outlay plan, your COP. Additionally, we do have the PIP and some other operating expenses that we've baked into this. So ultimately, I won't go through those. You've already looked at those plans. Ariana and team already have a, a funding plan from your FA. So I try not to belabor those, but real quickly, we have about forty-four million dollars of wastewater capital expenses, expected in the six-year timeframe, and then the balance of that 56 million in water. So you just see how that irons out over time. A little bit of a switch where you had more in water previously, you actually have more COP projects specific to wastewater. So quite a bit more there in this five-year horizon. But again, these are all detailed schedules. Council has already perused, so I, I don't provide that in detail here, but just sharing, these are the key ingredients. Ultimately, that generates an expense forecast. So you'll see in this expense forecast, we have our O&amp;M costs, that dark blue bar. You see the water purchases, as alluded to by Mr. Havelaw, are going up modestly. We already took our big jump coming from 24 to 25. So from 25 through 2030, it's 1.7% plus or minus. It even tapers off at the end relative to your cost from Bell County WUC ID1. Ultimately, that 5.7 year-over-year compounded annual growth rate you see in the left bar is because of the capital projects we just talked about. It's because of the debt service coming on and that's that dark orange bar at the top. So again, no surprises, but this is how the numbers shake out. Enterprise for the water wastewater utility goes from about 23 million today to about 30.5 million in 2030. So with that, and this is kind of my burning platform slide, every client sees it, what if we do nothing? So if you don't change your current rates, you'll see that the expenses, the yellow or orange tinted bar there on the leftmost chart, far outweigh your revenues over time. While you may have some fund balance reserves on the far-right chart to sustain you through 26, that quickly is depleted. So this chart says nothing else except we do need to take rate action.
I'm gonna interrupt real quick.
Please.
Mayor, thank you. So that far-right side, when I came here in 2011, that was the position we were in. The governing body was concerned about making sure that utility bills basically stayed the same. And we had to illustrate to our governing body at that time that we were in a position that we were either gonna stop providing efficient service or no service at all at some point, or we had to make some type of regular modest rate changes. And so I think that's what Mr. Garrett is specifically going to be presenting and walking us through.
All right. So yeah, with that context, you'll see here we have a five-year rate plan. The leftmost column, of course, is the type of charge. The second column is your current rate, as in place today for each of those minimum charges. Those are base fees on the bill, not necessarily a minimum charge per se, but the base charge, before you add the volumetric portion of each bill, you'll see your tiered structure. There, 0 to 5,000 gallons is your first step, 5 to 10 is the next. And at each successive step, we increase that rate because that's a discretionary and increasingly discretionary water use for our residential customers. And so there's a premium on that outside watering primarily, once you get into that 10,000-plus gallon consumption. On sewer rates, simpler, in, in some regards, simpler, in others, it's a interesting advanced floor and ceiling system you have. But you'll see your minimum charge there is 21, 22. You have that floor of about 8,000 gallons based on the winter average and that rate at 5.15. So pretty modest increases on the sewer side. You can see what those are coming up here as we take those rates out through time for this typical water bill customer at 5,000 gallons for both water and wastewater. So you'll see we have a much higher increase on the water bill. That's because our costs are dramatically larger, specific to our capital, our CIP plan. Our capital outlay is affecting wastewater, but not as heavily as the debt service on the water system. So you'll see the year-over-year increases there from $99 up to 108.96 for this sample customer. That's about a 10% year-over-year change. That percentage goes down, of course. It's still about a $10 change for the first three years, but as math goes, that's a lesser and lesser percentage and it winds up at about seven and a quarter by 2030. So I wouldn't show you those rates if they didn't work. And so this is the proof of, again, the same KPIs or key performance indicators around the rate setting process. You'll see your revenues and expenses on the left. Our debt service coverage bounces up above one as we move up this continuum. We are expecting some drawdown or use of fund balances. It's hard to draw down your fund balance and use cash and also generate enough cash to cover current expenses plus a debt service coverage. So that's why those two years are down. In each year, it's about $700,000. And so that's purposeful spend down. I can tell you, rating agencies don't typically frown on a use, especially if it's a one-time use, of surplus proceeds. And so I don't think that you're in harm's way for that. And additionally, your fund balance never gets down to 25 and we have the ability to kind of bounce back up to that 39% and still hold our debt service coverage on a five-year timeframe. Again, you're not being asked in this budget process or by me in this year to set rates for 2030, but these are forecasts based on today's assumptions, as Scott said, of what that would look like if all else is equal by that time. Lastly, we have built in some growth to this utility. It's about 220 customers for water, about 215 for wastewater customers. So any growth that is expected in that 200 range is already kind of baked into this. We've accounted for it, the additional expense plus their additional revenues they'll bring to the table. So with that, maybe been a speed reading for water. Any questions about the proposed rates themselves or the process for water and wastewater?
Counsel, any questions?
Then perhaps it was too slow. Hold on, I'll, I'll go faster. Just kidding. I appreciate your indulging me. So in solid waste, we do have one specific change, so we have a new sort of fee type and we'll get into that. I won't read each of these bullets to you, but you've already adopted CIP, a COP and a PIP. All of those are brought into account here. Additionally, you have some special expenses. You have disposal and hauling. We have baked in some inflation pressure on those additional expenses. There are two new positions, as Mr. Havelaw already alluded to, and then our other expenses grow with inflation. CIP here, it's a sort of a lesser plan than your water wastewater, so once you've talked about 100 million, this seems less, but in this utility, you have a number of projects, again, already in your CIP. Capital outlays, this utility does rely a lot on a large equipment, a lot of large equipment, I should say. And so no surprise, the capital outlays are consistent and pretty large dollar items, big-ticket rolling stock and other needs for the utility. All, all said and done, sort of the compounded annual growth rate or the average rate of change is about 4% for this utility. You see, it actually has a little dip down. We have a cash capital project in '25 that we won't repeat in '26. That's the reason for the slight reduction year-over-year. But overall, a pretty steady rate of growth at 4% for the solid waste enterprise. The outcome is the same. Current rates will not work. We have additional expenses and the current rates are, are meeting today's need, but they won't meet tomorrow's need. So I won't belabor that slide at all, but those are the same KPIs or key performance indicators. In solid waste, the current rate for a typical resident's 25, 25. We're proposing that increase by 2.53. At the city's druthers, you may round that to a dime or a nickel. That's a rounding difference. Some people like to do that. But here, on the nose, it's $2.53 more, raising that rate to 27.78, with that ultimate rate going from 25, 25 to 34, 33 by fiscal year 2030 with the plan. Okay? You also see the rearload rates. The rearload is a, is a program that you have. Those rates are going up pretty steadily. Those are also proposed to increase. That's a pretty costly endeavor and so we do have some larger increases affecting the rearload rates. It's not your predominant, I guess, service type. Your roll-off rates are here as well. You'll see these are at 20% increase assumptions year-over-year. This is for your open-top and compacters. Again, based on the cost of service, these were not paying their way and so instead of taking them to 100% cost recovery, we put a little bit heavier increase on this customer type than on our residents. Last thing here on this slide is gate rates. At the gate rate, the bottom-most line is effectively the new rate type. Currently, the city has a non-residential and a residential rate at the, at the gate rate, at the transfer station. Because you have some large suppliers that do a lot of activity, we're proposing a bulk rate, so it's effectively a volume discount, not much different than Costco, just a lot more volume in tons. And so that bulk rate is listed, starting in 2026, at $80 per ton. So that's really gonna affect more municipal, large-volume customers. Trash Panda is an example, there could be some others. All right, front-load rates. This is the prevailing type of commercial collection. These rates aren't going up quite as much as the rearload. These are going up 14% in 2026 and that kind of ratchets down to 10% by 2029. Each of these rate types is for a certain volumetric dumpster type and frequency. So the topmost data points, a three-cubic-yard dumpster, one-day-a-week pickup, and you can just follow that down the path. Overall, the increase is the same as a percentage across the columns, but each is presented for reference. Also, compactor rates. So same layout, a little bit different service style, so these are for compacted refuse. So again, these are three-cubic-yard, one-time-a-week for a compacted volume at 14%. The same percentage changes on all the front-load rates for these two user types. At the end of the day, again, as promised, the rates that we're suggesting work, we worked with them and so we think these are a good working model for the city, something you can get behind and your residents and ratepayers can understand. We are able to meet our debt service coverage in the third year, just as we were before. The fund balance reserves stay constant over our target, so effectively, we meet all the conditions assigned. All right. Any questions on solid waste before I talk drainage? There's one.
Yes, sir.
Two.
On page 21, I'm sure it's just, uh, just flipped, but you have the non-residents paying less than the residents for the gate rates and I think it's just, it's flipped.
I may have flipped that. My apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for that typo. I'll take a note. That's an important one, though. I mean, I would think so, yeah.
Mr. Smith, in the study, in the actual study, it's correct, though. It's where residence is the, the top line and non-residence is the second line.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Matthew not typing well. This is what that is. I apologize.
We told Matthew to hurry, so you know, one mistake is okay.
I don't know, there's another comment, Mr. Havelaw. We'll see, maybe two mistakes. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, that was my question.
Oh, good. Two for one. All right, fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now, my apologies for that. That is a glaring typo, especially as it affects your residents, something I would've, should have caught. So moving on to drainage, again, this utility is a little more straightforward. There aren't a lot of user types, not a lot of rate types. You do have about 9 million of CIP projects, another million planned in capital outlay and there is one additional staffer in your PIP. So similar charts, not quite the three, again, a little bit simpler, expenses versus revenues at current rates. Primarily, you can't hold the current rates and meet your debt service coverage and that's what this chart would tell you. And then in 2028, your expenses do exceed your revenues. So to accommodate meeting that target and probably for simple messaging, we proposed a simple dollar-per-year increase. That does get us all the way to fiscal '30. We do have a bit of a jump there from 13 to $15, but that typical residential rate goes from nine to 10 in next fiscal year and then if everything holds for the four years after, we'd have a dollar increase for three years and then a $2 increase between 29 and 30. So similar increases proportionally to the other user classes. You have a multifamily rate, non-residential and some other land uses. So your, your non-residential user types would have the same effective rate per ERU. So again, as promised, we are just skin of our teeth, a little shy of the debt service coverage in 2030. We left it there because the messaging is simpler at that single-dollar value and we have plenty of time to amend between now and 2030 and hopefully things improve and it's a 1.01 and not a .97 with the same rate plan. So really, that is all the utilities in a nutshell, certainly at a high level. Now, as it relates to a total bill, barring any voluntary contributions or any other items someone may have on their bill, all the utilities I presented are summarized here. This is a typical residential user with 5,000 gallons of water and wastewater. That, that total bill today is 133, 32, going up to 146, 74 and so on and so forth. So that increase is, what is my total dollar amount, about $13 per month on a typical bill. But certainly, water is the leading increaser, as was the project and the total cost. Any questions from counsel?
Anybody?
On the rates themselves?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. The solid waste, that also includes to continue with the recycling program, correct?
Yes. I haven't plotted any changes to service style or I'll defer on the operating expenses.
Just to confirm, Mr. Smith, yes, that continues solid waste. With our updated push to continue to enhance that program, one of the new positions this year actually is geared towards that. So we're still moving forward. In later years, you see part of this debt service projected or the capital required is actually a standalone recycling facility. We have several years to talk about what that would look like and kind of develop that proposal for city council, but it's definitely in our trajectory, and we're projecting, moving forward, and enhancing that program.
Well, if nothing else, counsel, thank you very much.
Good? Everybody good? Did you, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yeah, there's something that I've just been noticing. It's like a trend thing, and that's happening through, you got the, through the water and wastewater, solid waste drainage. It seems like there's like a spike, like in 2028, is there some significance of that year where there seems to be more of a jump in the increase in that year?
It's probably predicated on your capital plans.
Okay.
So I'll go to that, specific to water and solid waste. We have each of those plotted.
And that could be it, I just, you know.
Yeah, so your CIP here in '27, if you were to issue debt, that first debt service payment would come in '28, and so you're going to see it pop for that year for this 3.7 million at solid waste, so too with the 5.8 million, if you were to issue debt for that project. You'd see that in '29, and then absolutely back on water, going to take a minute to get there. But we do see a pretty sizable shift to our projects just over time, and so with that $15 million, and then followed by another $14 million, you see a pretty big shift. There's also an area I may be able to confirm, but you have an existing debt service schedule, and so it depends on how those debts were structured as well, so there could be a compounding effect. I don't know if any of them are ballooned. I don't assume so, but, yeah. But you just have a lot of debt rolling on that's affecting you at that point.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Thank you.
Trying to catch up. Good presentation, Matthew.
Thank you.
I think it showed exactly what, where we are and where we needed to be, and it's pretty well cut and dried, quite frankly.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes?
Yep. This was a quick introduction of both the budget and the utility rates, and as you've seen in that calendar, next week, we will have much more detailed discussions and more time to walk through some of those changes. Thank you.
All right. That is all for the workshop. I didn't go back and look. That was it, wasn't it? Okay. So the time is 6:18. We will adjourn, and our regular meeting will begin at 6:30. Good evening. The regular council meeting for the city of Coppers Cove held June 17th, 2025 is called to order at 6:32 PM. Please rise for the invocation by Ms. Hart, Secretary, and I'll lead the pledge of allegiance.
Please bow with me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day, this glorious day that we were able to have today and the rain that has came. We ask that you continue to guide the directions and the decisions that are made by our city officials and also while we are making the decisions on the dais, continue to keep our families safe, and thank you for the cover and protection that you provide for us for every day and for our city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge for a nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancey.
Here.
Christina Strophas.
Here.
Rita Hogan.
Here.
Sean Alzona.
Here.
John Hale.
Here.
Del Tredway.
Here.
Vanya Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
All right. We have a full house. We move to item D announcements. Ms. Strophas?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hogan?
None at this time, thank you.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Two. This Saturday on June 21st, first at noon, at the Coppers Cove Public Library, we will be hosting the Juneteenth Freedom Celebration, and tonight, city council received the official proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and in the next weeks, we will be holding a number of public meetings, so I encourage our residents who are interested to come and listen and participate. Thank you.
All right.
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
No announcements, thank you.
No announcements.
Okay. We move to item E, citizens forum.
At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person on any item which is listed on the agenda and items not listed on the agenda. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section. Pursuant to Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act, any deliberation or decision about the subject of inquiry which is not listed on the agenda shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
All right, is there anyone to speak during citizens forum? Anyone to speak during Citizens Forum? All right. We will close that and move to item F, Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, considered separately. Item one, consideration and action on approval of city council workshop meeting minutes for June third, twenty twenty-five. Ashley Osborne, Deputy City Secretary. Item two, consideration and action on approval of city council regular meeting minutes for June third, twenty twenty-five. Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item three, consideration and action to set a date for the public hearing on the city manager's proposed budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Item two, F two, doesn't have the agenda attached. So I don't know if we should pull that and put it on a future consent agenda.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So we'll pull item two. Is there consideration for items F one and three?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda items F one and F three as presented.
Second.
Motion made in a second for F one and F three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll pull the item two for the next regular meeting. Okay. All right. We move to item G, Public Hearings in Action.
A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Item one, Public Hearing in Action on Ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen to amend the future land use plan map by Wesley Atkinson from L D, Low Density Residential, to retail, retail and commercial land uses for Corial County property IDs one-one-zero-seven-seven-one and one-one-zero-seven-seven-two, consisting of two-point-five-nine acres located at twenty-one-oh-five FM thirty-four-six, Coppers Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Oh, it was public hearing. I forgot. Excuse me. Glad you caught me there. Time is six thirty-seven. We'll open up a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, staff received an application to amend the future land use plan map by Wesley Atkins. On May sixth, twenty twenty-five, staff held a development review committee meeting with the applicant's representative, George Mesa, from Quintero Engineering. On May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to the city council to amend the future land use plan map. Currently, the future land use plan map shows these properties designated as L D, Low Density Residential. The request to amend the FUP map to retail will accommodate the applicant's desire to allow for future expansion of an existing retail establishment known as the A-Stop convenience store located at twenty-one-oh-two South FM one-sixteen and a new retail commercial center along FM thirty-four-six. Staff finds this request does satisfy the specific review criteria to support the amendment to retail for the purpose of expanding and establishing new retail commercial land uses. With that, city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen as requested.
All right. Council, any questions for Mr. Lewis? All right. Is there anyone to speak on, beyond, for, against this item? G one? Again, anyone to speak on item G one? All right. The time is six thirty-nine. We will close the public hearing. Counselors, is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen as requested.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tredway, second by Mr. Hale. Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We move to public hearing at item G two, and the time is six thirty-nine. Open to public hearing.
Public hearing in action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen to rezone property by Wesley Atkinson from L R, Low Density Residential District, to R C, Retail and Commercial District for Corial County property IDs one-one-zero-seven-seven-one and one-one-zero-seven-seven-two, consisting of two-point-five-nine acres located at twenty-one-oh-five FM thirty-four-six, Coppers Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Mayor and council, on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, staff received an application to rezone the property from Wesley Atkins. On May sixth, twenty twenty-five, staff held a development review committee meeting with the applicant's representative. And on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to city council to rezone the property. City staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends a change of zone to R C Retail Commercial District. The R C District intends to allow for a broad range of retail sales and services, including retail-oriented uses like convenience stores, to retail-oriented uses or repair-oriented uses like a jewelry repair store. In addition, the R C District does allow for accessory uses like office and storage, food preparation, dining, and other outdoor display areas. With that, city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen as requested.
All right. Council, you have any questions for Mr. Lewis? Is there anyone to speak on public hearing item G two? Anyone speak for or against? Did you want to say? Yes.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Joanne Clark. I'm from Bible Way Missionary Baptist Church, twenty-three-oh-six FM one-sixteen. To where we're talking, we're across from the school and just, I think, five hundred yards, maybe a little bit more, to First Assembly of God Church. If we're talking commercial retail, as in that strip that's going up past the veterinary clinic, are we going to ensure that what's there is appropriate to be at the school? Like, no smoke, no vape, no liquor? Or are we just opening it to whatever they decide to do?
Well, I can address that.
Yes.
So basically what this is, is retail commercial, which is kind of a broad term for allowing commercial uses. Uses like liquor store have provisions in there and certain restrictions they have to comply with. And so they're in close proximity to those type of uses. Those are restricted. So.
Okay. My concern was the school and the churches.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak during the public hearing?
Good evening. George Mason with Quintero Engineering. On behalf of the developer, just wanted to clarify for her too and for the council. Our request is mainly just to reconfigure these properties to allow for the expansion of the A-Stop store. As far as the rest of it goes, our client has interest from a major restaurant, fast food chain spot that will hopefully will be developing that other portion of the property into that. So if that kind of alleviates a little bit of the concern there for that. Any here to answer any other questions if you guys have.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else speak on this public hearing item? All right. The time is six forty-three. We will close the public hearing. Is there action to be taken on item G two?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a recommendation to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen as requested.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tredway, second by Ms. Hogan. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bobby.
Welcome, sir. Thank you.
We will move to item H, Action Items.
Item one, Quarterly Activity Report for the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance and Request for Approval of Payment for Professional Services Provided. Keith Sled, Executive Director of the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Staff. Hope y'all are enjoying the weather, as humid as it is. Just wanted to give you a core update. The twenty-six D A grant, they did get funded in the last legislative session. We don't yet know when the funding and the project development will come out. We think it'll probably be August, September timeframe. But the likely project that we may go after is the A S R Recovery, which is Aqua for Storage Recovery System. It wouldn't put it completely in, but it would do some initial development on it, put in a test well and some other stuff, or a current well and connections there. But we'll have to wait and see because we'll get the city, the coordinating committees together, which includes the city managers and the county judges, and have that discussion with Fort Hood slash Fort Cavasos. I should start off, I should have started off this already. I know many of you got the note or have seen last week what the president's announcement was, that, well, he made that. Fort Cavasos did get the memorandum last night. There are the orders, I should say, from the Department of the Army. They will be renamed to Fort Hood. They have already started doing digital platforms. They have not set a date for the official renaming ceremony, and it is renamed for Colonel Hood, who is a distinguished service cross veteran from the First World War. It's not named for John Bell Hood. So that will continue on as you will see. It will take some time to repaint or rename some of the stuff. And we'll see where that goes. They got no additional funding for it, so it comes out of current funding. The FY twenty-four D A grant, that electric locomotive will actually be back this month. They'll do some initial testing on it and some other tweaking of the systems. We think we'll have the ribbon cutting this fall. Once that ribbon cutting date is somehow will make sure the city knows about it as well. Just a reminder, it's not to be an electric engine. It's a two-point-four megawatt battery on wheels, and it will power the railhead facility for seven days in the event of a power loss during a deployment, which is while the project was done. If it works well, we may see about converting the second one, which would give them the army's goal of having two weeks of uninterrupted power for that facility. We've already done stuff like this for the airport, as y'all are aware of. If you have question about any of those other stuff, I'll be glad to talk about. Otherwise, I'm gonna go on. The defense budget, the N D A was passed. And as you know, we have a full year continuing resolution, which causes some internal issues with the National Defense Authorization Act. There were two multiples in the act for Fort Hood. When they went to a full year C R, that eliminated the funding for those two. Based on what we've seen in the reconciliation, we do think that at least one of those will get funded in the reconciliation bill. But until that's signed, we don't count anything. It's tricky for them to do that in reconciliation, but they're convinced they can get it done. We'll see. I have a meeting with Congressman Carter, Chief of Staff, tomorrow. We'll see what he says when we have that discussion. For the Fort Cavasos connector, I think y'all are aware that they have a microtransit service on the post. And this is for your, just kind of really for your awareness. They are at now two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand riders since it started one March last year. It's very effective. Average ridership's about five-ninety to six-twenty a day, depending on what day of the week it may be. That's the good news. The bad news is current funding runs out. Originally was end of September. They now have some interim funding that may let it continue through December from the Department of the Army. We will see. Long term, it's got to transition to a paid service. The Army will not, it was always a pilot project when they started this. We have worked with the hop, the installation, and the Federal Transit Administration to work on that. The Federal Transit Administration doesn't support it. They say because it's intra-facility movements. It's not, which is, I explained to them the size of it. So they're talking about is larger than the District of Columbia. So how can you have mass transit in the district but not do it here? But they don't see it that way. So we're working with Senator Cornyn's office, I'm sorry, Senator Cruz's office, to put some language into, because he sits on Commerce, which oversees transportation, to put some language into the, when the bill comes up this year, to make an amendment to allow it to occur on military installations. Fort Cavasos is the first one. There's seven other posts that would like to see this kind of a service at their post as well. A third of the soldiers that come in now either don't have a car, don't have a driver's license, or if they're married, they have one car. So if the soldier takes it, spouse and the kids are kind of stuck wherever they are. They can't get around. The service does allow them to get around. It's proven very effective. These are the latter. They go downtown and buy a car, and then we see them practice driving in city streets. So probably a little bit better trade-off for the communities if we can keep the transit service. So hopefully we'll get that moving. Many of you may have seen the R C twelve turboprop aircraft. They have a bunch of antennas sticking off of them that fly out of Fort Cavasos or Robert Army Airfield. Those are being phased out. The aircraft are about thirty years old. They've been upgraded a couple of times. They've been replaced with an Embraer turbojet. It's bigger, got better capacity, longer range, and much faster. The Army made a stationing decision as part of this. Those aircraft belong to a brigade that's stationed currently at Fort Gordon slash Fort Eisenhower. There's headquarters there for the brigade. There's a battalion that does dissemination and exploitation of the information they collect. There's a flat battalion here, a flat battalion at Bliss, and a flat battalion at Hunter Army Airfield. The Army wants to move them all to one location. They did a study back in the fall. They came again in January for a second look, and Hood came out as the number one location. The post is working now to respond to the army's request to move it here. Initially, probably about six aircraft, but long term, it could be up to sixteen aircraft. The entire brigade as it currently is organized is about twelve-hundred soldiers. So you'd see if it stayed at that configuration, eventually you'd see all the aircraft and the twelve-hundred soldiers come here, probably about another fifteen-hundred family members in the area, which could be a good thing for the area. The first one will probably get here somewhere in twenty-six or twenty-seven because they're building new aircraft now, modifying them as they build them. Should be a good thing. There are about four of them deployed at any one given time, somewhere in the world, doing collection. So it's a good system. The new one will be even better. The Army Transformation Initiative, and you've probably read a lot about this. It's gone on in the paper and open source stuff. On the thirtieth of April, both the Secretary of Defense and the Secretary of the Army and Chief of Staff, the Army released joint letters that talked about what they intended to do. Some of the broader public stuff that's been talked about is Army Futures Command in Austin will merge with U S Army Training and Doctrine Command at Fort Eustis, Virginia, and become the Army Transformation and Training Command, and it will be stationed in Austin. No one knows yet what that means for personnel positions. Are they gonna move all the people out of Trade Dock to Austin? Will there be a small footprint left in Austin? I mean, and sorry, at Fort Eustis, and some will move, or what will happen. But there is a chance that you will see additional people moving to either the Austin area, or if they can't find sufficient space, potentially up here, because it's not that far away for them to work and be able to collaborate together. The other big announcement would be that Army Forces Command at Fort Bragg will merge with the Army North and Army South, which are both located at Joint Base San Antonio, and they will locate at Fort Bragg. So there'll be some same issue. No one knows yet what that means for the people. Will they move? Will it be downsized? Will some stay? And this is all part of their, also the plan to reduce the number of general officer billets in each level throughout the Army. A couple of other things that I want to highlight to you, the aviation brigades across the Army, as they're currently organized for the active duty divisions, all of them will lose one battalion of helicopters. It'll be a battalion of Apaches. The goal is to replace that with unmanned aerial systems. And they want the first ones fielded by the end of FY twenty-six. So it's pretty fast. It'll be probably a mixture of systems. They're gonna do what they call iterative fielding. So Company A may come out and field the greatest thing since last bread today, and in two months, another company make them up with a better system, and that'll get fielded to the next unit. So it's about moving faster than the, and speeding up the acquisition process, which, as you know, takes a number of years to get anything fielded. So we will see how that works out. They also want to field unmanned system, a counter unmanned aerial system, which will be the ability to defeat unmanned aerial systems to everybody by the end of FY twenty-seven. They want every company to have the capability by then. With these systems, the good news for our area is we'll get some of those, but also potentially brings new business to the area because there will be companies that will have to come along with that fielding, either temporarily to field it and get it initiated into the system. And there's a potential for the, each of the communities to maybe attract them and show them what they can do for them and attract them for future business. Fort Cavasos will not go anywhere anytime, Fort Hood, I'm sorry, will not go anywhere anytime soon. One thing that also will happen is Third Cavalry Regiment will get rid of their strikers. They will become a third armored cavalry regiment again. They will pick up tanks, Bradleys, and then one-on-nine Howlchers. So it'll look like one of the other armored brigades. We don't know how big it will be. Some of the older versions of the Third A C R were very large, five thousand soldiers, much larger than a brigade combat team is. We don't know if it'll look like that or not, but they will get back to their strikers. We don't know when that will start. Essentially, it's an equipment swap. The vehicles are currently at Fort, at a brigade that's at Fort Carson. Their equipment will be swapped with the, for this brigade here, and each one will become striker at Carson and four armored brigades here essentially. So I guess that ought to tell you there's not long term of negative effects to Fort Hood. It will maintain about what it has now. And there's some other new doctor- And there's some other new doctoral, as they develop the new transformation stuff that you'll see probably other capabilities come as well. Their goal is to get unmanned ground systems out and some other ones. We'll see where those go. Another opportunity for businesses, they want to put extended, or they want to put advanced manufacturing and 3D printing in every unit. They didn't specify what unit, but we're probably at the division level. That could bring another group of companies that would come to the area looking for someplace to operate or do business here as well and potentially expand that into the local community for harder to reach stuff. So it's going to be an evolving and, I think, rapidly moving, for the Army anyway, pace over the coming months and a couple of years as this goes forward. Be interesting to see. It's all driven by what you see going on in Ukraine, in the Russia, Soviet, Ukraine conflict with drones and how effective or ineffective they can be, or some other systems effectiveness. Last thing, maybe, is the fast facts. The deployment numbers are essentially the same this month as they were last month. That will change as their brigade will deploy for Operation Atlantic Resolve in the coming months. So they'll go to Europe. You'll see that the north Fort Cavasos slash Fort Hood numbers are dropped quite a bit, about 1,800 more this year. The 42nd Infantry Division, which is a National Guard Division, is up there training for a deployment that are going on, and there's some other folks that are coming in up there. But that's, that's the biggest changes on that chart. And then, subject to any questions you have, that's all I've got this evening.
Council, any questions for Keith? There's a lot of question marks in that, in those comments.
There are. It's going to be an evolving situation to see where it goes. There's a good opportunity too, though, with the change. I mean, those companies coming in, I think it's a great opportunity for the local communities to say, cost of living here is pretty good. Access to the soldiers and installations is easy. If you want to go to Austin to see all the, you know, the neat G-Wiz stuff, it's easy to get down there and not pay Austin housing prices. So there's just some opportunities that I think that hopefully this community will be able to take advantage of as it goes forward.
Council, any questions?
Thank you all very much.
Is there action to be taken on this side?
Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation to approve reimbursement amount, not to exceed $4,505 authorized payment to the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Ms. Hart. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. We're going to pull item H2 and move to item H3.
Consideration and action authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Copper's Cove and Corial County, granting exclusive jurisdiction to Corial County for the regulation of subdivision plats and related permits within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Copper's Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor and Council, the city has limited authority within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, or ETJ. For example, on March 19, 2024, City Council granted Landpasses Exclusive, Landpasses County Exclusive Jurisdictional Regulations to regulate subdivision plats and related permits within the city's ETJ. On July 2, 2024, City Council provided staff with direction to shift authority to regulate subdivision plats requests to Corial County. Staff provided Corial County with a draft interlocal agreement, giving them subdivision planning authority. The interlocal agreement includes the following. Corial County is granted exclusive jurisdiction to regulate subdivision plats and related permits. The city shall notify Corial County of any changes to the ETJ impacted by annexation. Corial County shall accept all subdivision plat applications located in the city's ETJ, and Corial County will send a copy of the plat application to the city upon receipt by the county. The County Commissioners Court approved the interlocal agreement on May 13, 2025. With that, staff recommend City Council authorize the mayor to execute the interlocal agreement between the city and Corial County, granting exclusive jurisdiction to Corial County for regulating subdivision plats, related permits within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Copper's Cove, Texas.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes.
All the permitting inspections still go through the city, correct, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, if it's in the city limits, correct.
Only the ETJ.
Yeah, and just to clarify, as Mr. Lewis said, it's only in the city limits. This is for the ETJ, which is not in the city limits, which means permits are not pulled and inspections are not completed.
So all that be done through the counties' will then?
They do not issue building permits at all. So no, sir.
Any other questions or comments? All right, councils, is there action to be taken on this side?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the city and Corial County, granting exclusive jurisdiction to Corial County for the regulation of subdivision plats and related permits within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Copper's Cove, Texas.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Mr. Alzona. Any other discussion? All right, hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. That takes care of all the action items tonight. We move to item I.
I-1, City Manager Report, Ryan Havela, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and Council, I'll go through my list of items to provide reports. If you need to ask a question, please interrupt me. Otherwise, I'll just continue to flow through the entire list, starting with capital projects. Our emergency generators are being installed at this time. It is for wastewater, excuse me, water facilities. One of the last things we needed were the automatic transfer switches that we had not received. Those have been received, so installation process is continuing. Animal control facility is in progress. We have one, two, three, at least four additional items that still need to be completed and inspected. But the inside is being done in terms of painting. The walls are up. So if you would like to see a tour of the uncompleted facility, please let me know. We'll work that in with our team to get you over there and take a look. It's looking really good. Senior Center Facility is in progress also. We've got a lot of the site work done. The pad is being prepared so that the foundation can be poured. We have a new retaining wall over there. If you haven't been by there, it's looking very good as well. We have bid out all of the interior work, so we should be receiving those bids at the beginning of July for all the interior work. The building should be delivered around that same time period in the first part of July. Once the building, and remember, it's a metal building, once the building is delivered, it will be installed at that time also. Anticipate a late fall, early October opening of that facility. City park improvements are progressing. We are doing irrigation work right now, as well as some additional work around the walking trail. Couple of larger projects that are anticipated with, to complete that project out will be to replace the dam feature that is at the duck pond, as well as dredging the duck pond. While that duck pond used to be pretty deep, it's probably not as deep as it used to be. And so that will help with the quality of the pond itself, as well as drainage, as a drainage component within our drainage system. Couple of other projects that are currently listed on this item is the municipal court project. That project, at this point, has completed all the work that it can. We have shifted to where we needed to bid out the remainder of that work. That bid will be going to be published within the next week or so, and then we will receive the bids and then have an award brought to council, which means that's your action to take to finish out the project. We anticipate that that project, if all goes well with our current timeline, will be done in mid-October as well. Last project is Fire Station Number Three. Fire Station Number Three is closed, and all staff have been moved to Central Station, but we are doing some demolition work there so that we can expand that facility to accommodate additional staff in the future. So that is going well, but we anticipate that that project will be completed in the November time period this year. City Activities, just a report on the water service interruption that occurred just a couple of weeks ago. Wanted to read through some of the activities that occurred. We have 13,500 accounts with residential customers and 700 accounts with commercial customers. During that time period, just overall, our community did phenomenal. We watched our water usage. That came from our water supplier, Belle County WCI-D number one. We were meeting our benchmarks on reduction in water usage. So super proud of our community, very proud of our team that did a lot of the public relations, communication. Thankful to a number of other organizations who helped support that. The Economic Development Corporation, CCISD, helped to get information out. Our Chamber of Commerce was phenomenal. We put information out on the Copper's Cove billboard. We had signs out at our entrances to the community. Our community did really well. Just in terms of ensuring that all of the restrictions were followed and compliance was understood, here's some numbers for you to understand. Our police department received three calls of service for potential violations. We went and checked those. All three were unfounded. However, on code compliance side, we received several complaints. Nine of those were with food establishments, and our code team went and visited with those restaurants and reminded them of the restrictions and gained compliance through those visits. Two commercial customers were inspected for usage. One was tagged, which means they received notice of a violation. One was unfounded. Two residential customers were reported. Both were educated and compliance was achieved through both of those. A number of irrigation systems were running in newer housing developments. We educated those builders, those developers. Compliance was gained on all of those. Utility administration, we unfortunately had 28 residential customers and one commercial customer that their water was disconnected due to irrigation violations during that water restriction. 16 customers had water disconnected because of excessive leaks during that time period. And one commercial customer had excessive leaks, and we disconnected that one commercial customer. So overall, looking at all the numbers I just shared with you, out of over 14,200 customers, a very small number were actually directly impacted with water disconnection because of either violations or excessive leaks that occurred. Central Texas Water Authority is, has now been signed into law, and there is a future meeting in July that I and a number of our team members will attend to ensure that we are participating directly in that process and that we are represented as the authority has stood up and becomes active. Belle Cor Regional Habitat Conservation Plan, I just attended a meeting yesterday. We are kind of ramping up the number of meetings that we are holding because we are on a very strict timeline with the grant that we, as a region, have received. Belle County is actually the grant recipient and managing the grant and the consultant contract. City Council will have action that you will need to take related to the RHCP, and that action will be to continue through Phase Four or discontinue after Phase Three. I don't know what the financial impact is yet because we haven't received it, but when we talk about that in the fall, you will have that information. You will understand what the financial implications are of proceeding in participating with the development of the plan or whether we stop at that point. Ogle Tree Gap Hike and Bike Trail, 4.7 miles within Ogle Tree Gap, has officially been opened with a ribbon cutting a couple of Saturdays ago. Really encourage you to go out there and hike or bike it, but share that information with residents throughout our community. Citizen Survey is coming up. We will be releasing that in July and August. Encourage our customers that receive those in the mail to respond. It will be a statistical sampling of those that receive the physical survey in the mail. However, we will also be posting this online through press releases, on our website, on our social media sites, and encourage anybody that has the link and receives that link or sees that link to please respond. It's really important because you, as a governing body, will utilize that citizen survey to begin making immediate and long-range policy decisions for our community. Transportation utility fee, as I discussed during the workshop in the presentation of the proposed budget, will be coming to council in the coming months with decision points, and we are already gearing up and working on our communication plan for that transportation utility fee because we really need to communicate well with our customers, our residents, and our businesses. Grant statuses, the EDA grant is moving forward with the Economic Development Corporation. That will be to install the infrastructure on Mashburn Drive. You just approved the agreement for annexation and development in that area, so that's the first official step so that we can begin doing that work, and that will be to install the roadways. OLDCC, Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. They manage both the study grant we've received, which is being managed by the Economic Development Corporation for the Truck Rel Facility, and they also manage the DSI-P grant, which is that next one, $10.3 million. Great news on that is I should be receiving a letter very soon from OLDCC allowing us to proceed with that project. We have received the notice or letter demanding payment from Tech Stock so that then they can bid that project out. So that's a payment of $10.3 million. I haven't received the letter to proceed yet from OLDCC, but as soon as I do, we can make that payment. And even greater news is, at least verbally, OLDCC will authorize us to submit for reimbursement as soon as we make that payment to Tech Stock. Then it's an administrative effort to begin reporting to OLDCC on all of the construction activity. K-Tempo is, not much is happening there. We're just having our normal monthly meetings. DAG grant is progressing. We have a contract with Dominion Energy, which is the contracted energy provider and construction provider for Fort Cavasos, now Fort Hood. And they have submitted their construction plans to Fort Hood for review. They will be getting comments from them so that they can then proceed with the project. As they proceed with the project, we'll get invoices. We'll pay those invoices. We'll submit those invoices to the governor's office for reimbursement, and Dominion Energy has worked with a couple of other cities to, on projects just like this so that we can proceed very efficiently. And lastly, the Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant. That is the study of our railroad crossings through town. We have just received word this week that the grant agreement is ready to sign. Really happy about that because it is about 15 months ahead of schedule from the original schedule they gave us. So we will be moving forward with that very soon. Subject to any questions, Mayor, that completes my report.
Council, any questions for Ryan? All right, items for future agendas. Mr. Opus?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hogan?
None, thank you.
Mr. Alzana?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, sir.
None. You just always look a real coy there. All right, we have no executive session tonight, so the time is 7:14. We stand adjourned.